Two o'clock and this meeting, I'll call this meeting of the approach committee to order. We have a forum and the all members are present and I you really want to give a warm welcome to new pros committee member Julie Amadei. At the main ninth board meeting, the board unanimously unanimously confirmed my recommendation to appoint Julie to the pros committee, filling an enormous void left behind by Kermit Johansson. So thanks to Kermit for his service. And I won't mind by, I know he wouldn't mind me sharing when, when he mentioned to me at the gym that he was, you know, that this would, that would be his last meeting last month. He said, I want you to give, or I don't want to give my position to Julie. Well, you can't exactly do that, but that sounds like a really good idea and at the time. And so I'm excited to have you here. You know, you've got a long history with pros commission and pros committee and really excited for the energy you're going to bring. So would you like to say a few words?
Well, that's a, that's a bar. What a pleasure to be on the team. So I'm here to work and there's lots of exciting things that have already been put into the pipeline that we love to see get across the finish line. So I'm just gonna say, let's go, let's get it done. And certainly want to add to the conversations because I, as you had mentioned, I've been with pros, following pros, been part of pros meetings for the last several years and have a lot of passion to see things get done out of the East Ranch. As well as of course getting our skate path across the finish line as well. I have a lot of respect for those that are in this room and in this group that dedicate a tremendous amount of time to our community. So thank you for bringing me into the fold. Looking forward to serving.
You're welcome. Thank you. So for the benefit of folks on Zoom, Laura and probably Schwartz are here. Shelley Becker is here. Troy Church is here. You know, listening to everyone who's on the committee and you know, either, you know, Kitty, I want to hit a lot of the talk. I think just could you verify that you're hearing us?
I am, Michael. Thank you.
Right. Just like to always want to know if it's working. And so we have Kitty Connolly and Karen Ogdonal currently on on um, a lot has happened since our last meeting on April. My April meeting. At the April 18th CCSD board meeting, the board approved the introduction of the civil administrative citation ordinance. And the, the intent is of course that we never issue any citations. The, you know, the intent is that with that little nudge, you know, hopefully that people will comply with the, the ordinances, but it does provide an additional source of motivation. And so I want to bring that up in terms of like you know, be, be looking for, thinking through ways that, that new civil administrative citation ordinance, which is an awful, can be useful. And you know, in terms of accomplishing our objectives. The and also, yeah, the board received the finance committee's general fund revenue enhancement report. And the board appointed President Tom Gray and me, the ad hoc committee to do, to assist. You know, David Geary and, and the general manager in reviewing the FNR activities and expenses associated with the ranch and do work to delineate delineate the responsibilities of CCSD and FFRP, something that's been needed a long time and all to continue our work together cooperatively and work towards balancing our budget. So it's going to be a busy summit. You know, at the, at the main ninth board meeting, the, the CCSD, the board approved the resolution requesting county repair rodeo grounds road. And so they, the, the county did get out pretty quickly and do some grading. Now, I don't know if you, if you walked out there, I walked out last, I think it was done last Tuesday and well, my first reaction was, is this all we get?
They did it all over town too.
Did they? All right. Yeah. And but it's better.
Yeah.
But we, let's not let better, perfect, the enemy is better. So it's better. Also, we don't have any written comment for this meeting, but I wanted to bring up as the last CCSD board meeting, President Gray indicated that we are no longer going to, at the board meetings, be reading the written comments aloud. Now he had, you know, verified California legal code and what's, what's essential is that the public be able to provide written comments and that those written comments be provided to the board members to inform them on the issues. So so I guess, you know, that, that's a change at the board. And wanted to bring that up for your consideration and just get your thoughts on should we adopt that process or not? I, I asked President Gray and, you know, are you going to provide direction to the standing committees? His thoughts are off each standing committee. So
I'd like to chime in on that.
Yeah.
We don't get that much written comment. And I think the more we can engage the public and they have the opportunity for their voice to be heard. I highly encourage that if it's going to take another three minutes to read through it.
That was important.
I welcome, I welcome their comments. I welcome their attendance. That's just feeling on that.
The only thing that sometimes happens is that people forget what we are. So they write a comment that really has nothing to do with what we do. So I would, I say, yes, let's read the comments, but maybe I don't, do you have to do all or nothing? Is it appropriate to say this particular comment has no, no purview with pros? And so we don't read that one or read them all or read them?
Yeah, well said. And I've asked that question. And, and just because someone indicates it is to be read in prose. Um, it will be read in this committee only if it is within our jurisdiction.
Okay, my life is then.
If it's something about the water plant, we're not going to read it here.
That has occasionally happened. Yeah, recall that. Yeah.
And I agree, except I believe the chair thinks it's beneficial to let people know and this is a part of you know, this isn't part of our jurisdiction, just and other people can't send comments. Yeah, well said. Yeah. If there's a comment that we've, it's been asked to be read and I believe it's not appropriate, I will indicate that at once.
If you do receive a comment, a written comment, and it doesn't relate to your committee, then I think it should be forwarded to the CCSD.
I like how you said that again. Absolutely. Yeah.
Always good. Yep.
Okay.
No, I'm vote, no, I'm voting no on it. I'm against that idea. I don't believe a written letter is the same as a public comment. You hide in a written letter. If you have a public comment, you come to the meeting. Other than that, it's a public comment on the letter. I'm happy to entertain them in the packet and read them and discuss them if I feel it's appropriate. But do not think it's necessary to read somebody's letter at a public meeting. Never, I've never thought that. I just think I've been at CCSD meetings, they write some cockamamie letter. We gotta sit there and listen to it. That's not the meeting. You want to say some cockamamie stuff, come to the meeting and say it in public. Thank you.
Another thing just to keep in mind is the time limit for written comment opposed to spoken comment. Yeah. And it will kind of time when it, if I do discretion, but that's going to be a problem to be allowed along. Yeah, about six months ago, we had that. And, and so I did check and verify that, yeah, three, three minute limit applies to written as well. If we choose to read them and, and it's, you know, right to what you're saying, but I think I've got
Yeah, yeah. Vote on it, right?
Yeah. Well, no, this is not something that was agenda is so we can't vote on. I just wanted to hear the thought. Yeah. And I, you know, clear enough, Laura.
Okay, just, just a thought on that too. Sometimes you can't, you can't be on Zoom or you can't hear in person. And if you want the committee to hear what you're saying and not just go to the chairperson, as long as it's short enough and it pertains to what is, you know, what is, what are your purview news? That's just a consideration.
Yeah, well, well, for now, I've heard enough to say we're going to continue the staff call. We will read the written comments at the meetings, you know, and, and we can revisit this at any point. But good thoughts. Anything? Anything else from, also from the committee members? Brief comments?
Pertaining to what you just said.
Oh, no, no. So moving to agenda review, moving to agenda review. I've got nothing to change. Anyone? No. And ad hoc committee reports, we've got on the agenda to discuss the adhocs. So I let's just do that when we get to that point. And so it will, you know, item committee member communications. So any specific communications?
I have two things.
Yeah, I thought so.
Um, one, uh, the skate park ad hoc committee was formed to get the skate park to the permitting process. Now that it is at the permitting process, not directing this necessarily at you, but in general, I do believe that the ad hoc committee with the CCSD should be disbanded and control of the skate parks should be handed over to pros. Pros can then add it to our goals matrix and add Julie as the DRI for the project. So I am formally requesting that that happen.
Okay.
Formally, we received, but
Yeah.
Um, and the other thing totally escapes me at the moment.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I think it was about solidarity.
Oh, yes. Also, I am formally requesting that someone from CCSD show up at our pros meeting every month now and give us a, an update on the progress of the bathroom. There's talk about the pathway to the bathroom, the foundation of the bathroom, all sorts of logistics that we don't know anything about. And I do think that we should be kept in the loop, especially since we can't do anything until the bathroom is done. And we would like to know what's happening with the bathroom at every stage.
We're talking about the East Ranch bathroom. I just want to throw that in.
Yeah, always talk about that. That's one that matters to me. And then, then another thing, just kind of a personal plea with our group here, our pros family. It does seem to me, and I know this is not formalized anywhere required. And of course, everybody's, you know, can have their own opinion. I would hope that when we discuss things here, that when we go in front of the CCSD to make a recommendation or an ask, that we are united as a board and that if we have personal feelings about the subject, that that I don't want to say you keep it to yourselves because like I said, of course you're entitled to your opinion. But it does make it look like that we are disjointed, unorganized and not together on things. And, and I hope that we are. So that's it. That's my things.
Thank you. Good, good thoughts. Others. So one of the things I
Michael, yes, Kitty, scott hand up.
Say. Are we on the item two? Wouldn't that be here if she had her hand up?
I do not have my hand up.
There you go. There's a good one there, but thank you. So the next topic on the agenda is public comment, but I'm also, I've also communicated to our partner organizations that will have our updates, basically topic number four at 2:15 PM. And so what I'd like to do is move to that topic for now and we'll have, you know, we have four committees represented here. And then we'll come back to public comment and then to David Aguirre's FNR management board. So Kitty, would you like to lead it off with FFRP?
Sure. Thank you. And thank you, Tony, for noticing, even if it wasn't me that time. So I have to congratulate all the volunteers who put together the Cambria wildflower show at the end of May, which was spectacular. It's always spectacular there, but this year they did I think an exceptional job of finding flowers. Because it was an unpredictable spring. So there were about 550 plants. And about 500 people saw them. So if it had have been a take home, each person could have taken home one and we still would have had poison oak left over. I don't think anyone would have gone for that. So we had also a party for our volunteers, which is one of our, my favorites annual events that we do. I admire them so much and so grateful to them for everything they do. Also, I want to thank David for spraying the ice, spraying the thistle. We have fantastic weeders, but this, you know, there's no possibility of them actually doing all the work by hand. So for the last 10 years, there's been spraying of thistle and weeds on the ranch. Some years more than others. This year is an exceptional year. So there's been a lot of spraying and I've been talking to the public about that and putting them hopefully at their ease. We use the same herbicide every year. Not dangerous to wildlife. Not that anyone's eating thistle. Also, we, Michael Thomas led a ice plant weeding party last weekend and is going to do a pass clearing party of work day this week and just to make the both, both to improve access on the ranch for people and to improve the ecological value of the ranch. So those are really important works that friends of the Fiscalini Ranch preserve do and again, could not do without our volunteers. We are having a pop-up sale back on the ranch Memorial Day weekend on that Saturday morning just outside of the ranch on the South Bluff Trail entrance. And I expect to be able to answer quite a few questions about the boardwalk. Because the entrance to the link, new linking boardwalk will be close to there. And now that it's in the public's awareness, I'm happy to talk to people about that. So far I've gotten only good feedback about that project. And it was nice to get some good press on that project as well. So those are my updates and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions for Kitty? Thank you, Kitty. And just rolling down the list, Kate Cambria, Julie.
That's a good entry.
Yeah.
There is a lot of exciting events that we participated in and are getting ready to be part of the Monster Skate Series, which is the biggest series event for our area, just ended and those finals were on Saturday. We had one of our kids take third place overall, which I just am so thankful for all those that have attended and supported the skate series. We work very closely with that skate series and they know we're coming as soon as our park is built, will get added into the mix. They included Napomo this time because Napomo is the newest part to, to the series. So that was exciting. We also simultaneously had going at the same time what they call Skate Safari. Skate Safari is a very large event in Ro Grande. We participated, we were there in a booth location, actively involved in just sharing the project. And of course fundraising the best we can on the ground. And we have an event coming up on June 22nd, which is at Sam Lewis, it's at Slow Brew Roddenhammer, which is now what they're calling it Roddenhammer. And it's a surf skate event. We'll be there in a booth location. They're also very gracious to us. They were part of a fundraiser. Last year where Tony Marino, who is a pro skater, has a band and he was the opening act. And of course, they were very generous about supporting the project. So that just kind of gives you an idea of how we're out there beyond Cambria on the central coast. Often sometimes people will say, well, it's just for the kids of our community. This park, yes, is for the children of our community, but it's also for the central coast. And they know that Skate Cambria is alive and well and a park is coming on the timeline. We have now gone past our land use permit. It has been issued by the county. We're very excited about that because we sat for half a day at the county in regards to getting that pushed through with our commissioners and we're excited to say that next up is construction and I get to use that word construction and underlining. So construction is coming. We of course are working through those next steps with all that's involved with county and with design teams and with CCSD, a big important piece of that is the maintenance fund. And we are in the process of backfilling that and coming to agreements with CCSD. And of course their board on what that number looks like for an appropriate maintenance fund. But we're very conscious of it as a team. And again, we're beginning to backfill that number already. We're not afraid of backfilling a maintenance fund. So we'll get it done. We just need to come to agreements with a memorandum of understanding with the district. So exciting times for the park. We're often asked when. And my answer is as quick as we can. We've discussed the bathroom now also at the park. So we've got that in motion. And we should hear from the grant funding sometime in June, but there aren't any issues that we're aware of right now. We're in some final reports that are required for that grant. And I'm going to give compliments to the district because they've been working very diligently on trying to check those boxes in order to get this grant to fund. Qualifying is one thing, funding is another. So we want to get it funded and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. And what are the steps between here we are and breaking ground, the first construction?
It's a great question. We're going to have to go out to RFP. So obviously the construction permit is a piece of it. And so construction permit, RFP, once we can finalize on decision of RFP, we can begin. Nothing should hold us back at that point because money will be in place between grant funding and what's already in the bank.
Right. So you'll, you'll seek the construction permit.
Yeah.
And that's following some exploratory
Yeah, the construction permit basically is resubmissioned to the county and it's going to involve, I don't want to just say engineering, Monte Soto is on the side of that in regards to working potentially with our consultant to try to make sure that we are being very conscious on how those construction documents are being submitted. Nobody here has ever done a skate park. So this is very different in infrastructure than just a bathroom and pouring some concrete. In fact, one might argue it's even more critical on how that concrete is poured with transitions and safety. So that consultant that's coming in is potentially going to help aid us in the direction to make sure that what's going to the county is going to be a very well-designed park that is conscious of having a designer that understands skate parks. Does that make sense? Skate park specifically. Yeah.
When you say design, are you really meaning engineering? Because the design is going to be the same. It's just really how they build those components. Does it, right? They're not changing the design.
They can't, well, the design as a whole has been approved with the lens, right? There might be some pieces within the park. We're talking about right now on how the park is this piece and all of your infrastructure is on the outside, right? Curb and gutter, storm drainage. So there might be like components within the interior, Steve, that might change like a rail or, you know, something that's when I say insignificant, it's all significant, but it's not a transition. It might just be a bench rail, right? Or some type of brothel or so the answer is yes.
And is the guy evaluating not the same guy that
At work moment, yes. Yeah. Yeah. Spot matches where we started with our creatives. Aaron has been instrumental through this process. As those who know the project, he has built more parks than I know how to count. I mean, very knowledgeable and continues to lean in for us, Stephen. So he is very important to come to the table to say, you're gonna want to design the park like
And we're not being able to go so as well.
I would love to make that conversation happen again. So I, I'm still in the camp of wanting to do a design build on this project, at least on the interior of the project, right? I think it's a conversation that's
But for now, we're going R
RFP is, is what we've been approved to do with the memorandum understandings with the district and I don't want to misstep. So I'm just going to say
But Aaron is then just going to be as a consultant?
That's what we're looking at. Yeah. Yeah.
So in this project is providing substantial capital improvements, especially to the hillside. Can we start? Can the project start with any of that before you have to start the, the actual, the skate park?
That's a great question, Shin. So let me throw some numbers to the public. 1.2 million. $350,000 is the part roughly. The rest of it is infrastructure requirements by the county. So it's just
A thank you to the kids for all the capital improvements that are happening to that space as a result of the skate park.
Again, curb and gutters, storm drainage. The list is long, but with that said, I don't think anything will start until we are through construction permit and and again, a conversation on design build versus design bid build. I also want to remind the community that after this project is done, the district's commitment was $178,000. That $178,000 has now been reduced to roughly about $130,000 because of a grant from CTV for $47,500. And we're still pending another grant. So we're reducing the taxpayers liability. So when this finishes, chances are very high that the taxpayers in this $130,000 on 1.2 million. So it just speaks to the project on
Well, wasn't that much, didn't that money come from the original? I'll say grant, but money that was provided to recreation for our community?
No, it did not. That came from a district memorandum because that ramp was moved to the bathroom of the East Ranch.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah.
For clarification. Yeah. So yeah, reducing liability and trying to make it a project that the community can be proud of and is not coming out of the taxpayers pockets.
Amazing. Well, thank you, Julie. Yeah.
My pleasure.
Shelley for Dog Park.
Shelley, we also have a lot of involvement with volunteers for weeding and some donations. And on game second, just coming up quick, we're going to have a Sunday at eight noon, we're going to have a weeding day, birthday, because the weeds are out of control this year. And we've also got some dark green trash cans added for the lemons to keep it clean and safe. And so we're partying, eating pizza and so if anybody wants to work on Sunday, June 2nd, please come into Dog Park with your gloves and we'll have some tools available. But if you have a favorite tool, bring it with you.
Thanks, Shelley. Questions for Dog Park? On the list, Green Space. Corinne?
Hi. Corinne here from Green Space. So we are launching a speaker series that I'm really excited about. You'll be seeing, we've got everybody from biology specialists from up in Ventana. There's some really incredible authors, botanists coming through. So watch for that. We have an upcoming bat class on the 30th at the Creekside Reserve that sold out very quickly. One of our board members is a bat specialist and we're going to be doing an evening experience, a class at the learning center, some snacks, and then going out into the meadow and down by the creek and actually listening and seeing the profiles of different local bats. Pretty exciting. Heritage Days, we're going to have the Chinese temple open with docents from 11 to 2. And so come on out to the reserve and see the new native plant botanical, the demo garden is just looking fantastic. All the grasses that we just planted have really taken root. All the tags are in. Really proud of that project. So please come and enjoy that. All the tags are in. Really proud of that project, so please come and enjoy that. And what else? That's really it. We're getting excited about working with the RCD. Hopefully in July, starting our fuel reduction program and forest health management program in Strawberry Canyon. They're hard at work right now on that fuel break at Randall, but we're next on the list. And that's the news from Green Space. Happy to answer any questions and thanks for having us.
Gail and I are looking forward to the evening with the bats.
Yeah, glad you signed up.
Questions for Corinne?
How do you find out about these?
The bat class?
Just in general, all the things that are coming up?
I put them on Chamber of Commerce, all of our social media, they're on our website, on our blog, posters all over town, email list.
I think I saw it on Cambria CA.
Yeah, I wrote an article, I think, on Cambria CA too. But we pretty much do blast it. And if you, a really great way to know what's going on at Green Space is just get on our mailing list. Because we do send out emails about that and it's always on the website, too.
Okay, so just go to the website and sign in. And if folks see our question, you know, email me and I'll pass on, you know, Corinne. And Crosby, Laura?
I'm gonna pass it on to Crosby. I wanted to. Give the report. I wanted to make a public comment that would be more appropriate, just as an individual.
All right, and you can do all of that, yes.
I have just some forest-related information. Corinne already mentioned it, but it's actually a Rancho Moreno reserve item, but it started some state-funded fuel reduction work on along Randall Drive and up the driveway coming up to Camp Ocean Pines. It's, they consider that a shady fuel break. But they're well into it. If you want to see what that looks like, just drive up to Camp Ocean Pines and on the side of the road there. It looks like they're piling a lot of dead material to get ready to burn. I don't know. They, do you know anything about?
Yeah, we heard anything.
I look like they're trying to do pile drainage. That's something that the CCSD fire department needs to monitor because the power can become a problem. So take a look if you're interested, upper part of Randall Drive and Camp Ocean Pines driveways. That's all I have.
Fantastic. Questions for Jim?
No, I'm waiting for public comment.
Okay. Any other questions for? All right, so I think we are, yeah, Land Conservancy, like you said, we're not on, so we will move to item two, public comment. And Jim, you had something you wanted to say?
Yes, I have a comment.
Well, public comment is for members of the public. So we, I did ask committee members, but let's call this Committee of Communications.
Sure. I just wanted to mention that I made public comment about the bathroom position at the at the CCSD meeting. I was asked to do so by several people. In retrospect, if I knew what David Pearson was going to say, I should have passed. And I want to apologize to the ad hoc committee for the comments. I wanted to expand outreach and in no way did I feel that it wasn't properly noticed or addressed. So I just wanted to make sure that I hope you accept my apology for inferring that it wasn't.
I appreciate what you're saying. Hi, Laura? Public comment?
Yeah, I'm a public in this.
There we go. Absolutely. Okay.
I handed over, I'll make it real quick. I handed over a brochure to Chairperson Thomas, which I thought was very interesting. Well, members of the Boris Committee went to the Land Conservancy's reception, I think, at the Opticon Barn a couple of weeks ago. And I just wanted to give a shout out for these people. They have been, they started here forty years ago for the sake of Cambria, funded by the Coastal Conservancy and then turned it into a county program of taking care of, culminating some of our vacant lots that are more than vacant lots. They're actually Conservancy. They make Cambria beautiful. And they started here, they are now turned into a multimillion-dollar organization. Somehow, they know how to fundraise, they know how to inspire people. Just a very active, positive group. And the comment I wanted to make is that they did start here forty years ago. This is a program that involves the CCSD, the Coastal Conservancy, and the county. And for forty years, people have considered these lots as a hindrance. And I don't understand that. I really don't. And the part I don't understand is everybody's complaining that we don't have enough funding for some of these things. They even consider the discolene a problem. So why are we continuing to take on new projects that take so much time and energy and money, no matter how or when, when we haven't taken care of a forty-year-old program? And stop considering our open spaces and our beautiful trees as a hindrance? And figure out a way and put the energy into doing that instead of taking up new projects until we finish a forty-year-old one? That's my public comment.
Thank you. Other, other public comments?
I have a feeling to the end, Corinne probably said what they wanted to say. I don't see a hand up, but anyone else?
Bye. Thank you. So David, you know, facilities and resources?
So ours, the west ranch right now, like maybe we're talking about, we ended up spraying quite a bit out there that the soul and some. It's been a crazy day already this week. We already started on that one last week? Yeah. Yeah, last week we ended up doing that for five days, turned around and worked with one of the contractors. Got that all taken care of. And no, this week we're working on fire breaks along the Windsor and also Trenton. I'm working with contractor there, have our guys out there doing that too, to cut down the costs. That's the main thing. And also, it's basically training for them to understand on what we do on a regular basis out there. They cleared out yesterday, also two big trees. And then today, we actually had a couple of things need to be taken care of on the CCSD site. And I'll be honest with you, our lots, we are going to be behind on them this year. We're not going to be done by the fifteenth. There's no way. We've already mowed east branch five times and some of the locks we've already hit four times. And yeah, we're going to be falling way behind this year. The growth has been a little crazy. And, you know, in regards of newer projects, new things that are coming through. I haven't been here for the full year to see where we are and being pulled in different directions has made an effect to our lots, because I know that's the newest thing that we picked up on behalf of the district from the contractors. The TTRPs, trash cans, we aren't going to be able to get those until probably about in December. So we're looking at, we're working with the light pole issue there because of the banners. That's one of the things that's coming up for the high school. So what it is, there's, there's quite a few damages that are to those poles, the banner rods. Those are being ordered out. Those are two and a half months behind. Those are out of Canada. So the poles, that's another issue. Yeah, so we're looking to put a Band-Aid on it. We're looking at some stuff, some cheaper ones from Amazon. Turn around accommodated, we're gonna scrape them in black and make them remotely close. And then it said there's roughly about twenty students, so twenty poles are need to be designated. We're trying to figure out how we're going to rent a boom and turn around and do that too. Because setting an A-frame ladder up against a fourteen-foot pole is not suitable in my books in safety and liability for the district to put an employee up there trying to bolt down these banners. The lots, a lot of it is going to be, like I said, we're going to be so far behind, even with the third person, myself. Today, I've been out there for about six and a half hours. I was out weeding today and, yeah, it's, there's quite a bit. East Ranch, I turned around and put out some chips, starting from the parking lot, about a hundred and fifty yards past the main street entrance, the bridge there. So what it is, we had some chips coming up messy, watching people take truck loads and trailer loads out of our pile. So I made that decision, turned around and started. I just wanted to make a jumpstart in. I know permission and everything else of that nature. So I did do some pictures. What it is, I turned around and sent it out there and then a mold chip with our flailer. So fine mulch, so it did pretty good. It's only a four-foot strip all the way through. And I just had another couple of loads dropped off this week, so I'm going to be jumping on that. Trying to be sometime next week to get that started, see how far we can keep on going. So I can get it all the way down to Highway one. It's, you know, the impact as for, you know, your joints and stuff, that interest, one thing I looked at. So that's one thing that I'm pushing, working with the contractors, giving you as much wood chips. Because the one that I did want to talk to is the you guys about Burn Canyon. I know it's a small trail, thought about doing the same thing up in there and then some of the seedlings, some of your new plants and stuff of that nature, turn around and put some off around the bases of those to keep the moisture and keep those going so that we don't keep the weeds and everything else from going off around them. So that's something that I'm kind of putting in motion. That's why I wanted to conversate with you guys on the forest committee on that one there, if it was going to be okay. Yeah, I know the volunteer group for the FFRP, Sarah Godson. I'll be honest with you, as much has been done by them, has really taken a lot of pressure off of our department. And I know I am taking on more stuff individually because as for the French broom, I know the blooming season of that is, it's already hindering, it's already, it's already here. So I'm planning to next week going out and start cutting them out myself. Ended up doing some research, talked to Steve Biddle and a couple of different other people. And he walked me through a couple of things, so I'm going to start doing that there on the east side of the discolene ranch. Worked it in because the way that the wind blows blew a lot of the seeds over into that backside of our canyon. They're not bringing it into Santa Rosa Creek in that area. And that's one thing I'm going to be working into the next two and a half, three weeks roughly, looking into the Santa Rosa Creek, what we can do to clean up that whole section. Has been neglected and I take responsibility over that. Just not knowing how to address that whole area because it is as big, that is a very big one. And then with our finances, I know with everything with the fires, the reset's coming in to do the fires rant, to help out with the discolene of our lots, to remove a lot of the dead trees. There's going to be quite a bit of work relieved from our department, which I'll be honest with you. More or less, we contracted out a lot of that work, so it's still free us up. There's going to be some free funds in that aspect, which I know our funds been cut in certain areas when it comes to these categories. So with them coming in, I'm working with them to see what we can do to take their experience and turn it into knowledge for our guys and working that into the whole ranch out there. Yeah, the fire breaks. The big thing that I have right now, I'm only down to one tractor. The one that we ended up taking up to Salinas had repairs done to it. Flex plate still has no pressure for reverse. So they came back down from Salinas and picked it up and took it back. It's been there for two weeks. So that's our main flailer. Ended up taking the one from wastewater, their old one, that they moved trailers with, that is a dying tractor that we're putting Band-Aids on. I've already dumped some money into that and trying to get it up to our failer. And it's a lot of work in the process. We've already done a lot of repairs to it. Building wise, public bathrooms, we no longer have the gas oil service. We're completely done with them. That's a big concern that we end up having, leaving the doors open, not restocking. It's been a nightmare on our end. Get phone calls that there's homelessness in there and stuff. So over the period of time, what we've been spending, our guys go every morning and open it up. So what we've incorporated now, we've turned around, our two guys come in the morning, they turn around and wash the interior of the restroom's restock. And then it's fully functioning from that point. At night, we have one individual that we keep on that comes in at a later time, closes the restaurants. We've been doing it for, I started closing them periodically, weekly at a time to see if there's any, any kind of a concern or any comment from the public. We started shutting them down at six o'clock. I haven't heard anything whatsoever. I did go through and talk to several of the merchants throughout the areas around these things. Most of them are closed by four thirty, five thirty in the afternoon. Six o'clock and five on how that usually works out is restaurants. Most people are already checking into their motels and they're looking at dinner reservations, stuff of that nature. But that's one thing that we have done. They get closed daily about five thirty, six o'clock. And then our guys are cleaning it up because of costs on that. And that comes down to our admin building, F and R, water and wastewater, and they've been eliminated completely even from the vet's hall. Because we've been doing the vet's hall since I've been here. So that was a big thing on that one there. So a lot of them going on in our department. The light pole today, one of our guys backed in the light pole here at First Street, remain in Cambria. It was a one-inch mark on the bumper and finally finished off. You can tell somebody else has already hit it. We just finished it. So it sits inside of my shop, broke the post completely off the bottom. So and that's where we're actually reaching out to the company, seeing about getting a replacement for that one. So it's already in wire, it's already, yeah, turned off the home in New York, so yeah, we're good on our. Cleaned up the entrance into Cambria here, just because of knowing that it's a weekend, a three-day weekend where there's going to be a lot of traffic. Cleaned that up quite a bit for us. And then the east or west ranch, I did the entrance, a couple of winds are also this morning. I did that one. Cleaned up around there, around trash cans. Ice plant's already gone. I did that yesterday, loaded that out. Yeah, we already hauled all that out.
Okay.
Yeah.
I feared that we would let it sit there and dry out, but I had a feeling.
Yeah, I got that out of there. I know the dog park, I know the grass or the weeds on the inside have been exceedingly tall. We kind of put some of that on the back burner because I know we want to turn around and shut it down for a day. We want to turn around and go in and we debate it and then turn around and start spraying a little bit around the edges, clean it all out, so that way it'll, everything will die out. That's a big concern that we have.
Corinne?
Just around the bouncy, around, more or less on both. First, they're talking about, I know around the trees, that's a whole different ballgame. Because we gotta go in and pull out all the posts and everything else to get it all around us. And the wire, because I want to put chips up around that too, to keep the weeds from going in off around us.
You wait till after the second?
That's what I ended up noticing on your emails. So I ended up in, that's why I talked to the guys, we have on our board, so it's on our radar with that. Yeah, and then there was a public comment that was made up that was sent to me in regards of Van Gordon out there, the house that's out live. Yeah, so this year, that falls under wastewater and water, from what I've heard in conversating with Jim McGreen in regards to that, it is on their radar. They are going to be taking care of the weed abatement, which from what I've heard, that we're kind of buying into that to help him out. But as for the old building, that's something that it's, the conversation that he and I have had, it's still applauded, it's shot, it needs to be demolished. And from what I've heard and has that wise, it's a hundred grand. They go in and redo everything, rip it all out and in turn we're able to tear down the rest of the building. But it is on our radar to clean up off around it for the time being to make it a little more presentable. It's just something that's in the mix amongst everything that we have going on. Yeah.
That's an excellent report.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah, facilities, water, the crews are out there just absolutely working their nails off.
Yeah, it's been, it's been, yeah.
Taking a lot of green, working their tails off, not undercompensated.
I mean, they they worked until six thirty last night, our guys. Uh, out we debated and they shut down the bathrooms last week, I mean, I was here until nine o'clock one night. Uh, doing stuff and other crews, all my guys been around about thirty, six o'clock and I know water, they've been. They've been out there in wastewater, they've been out doing weed abatement also, uh it's a big concern, uh the growth that we've had has been phenomenal. Yeah, I wish we had it in in valley, you know, uh inner valleys over here, passing there and stuff of that nature, I mowed once. Around my five acres and I'm like, I'm happy. Turn around and out here you mow once, you just turned around and reseeded and gave more life. Uh, I usually on the average, we're noticing it's three or six inches, but we were getting back after all the moisture in here and also with the rains, so. Yeah, it's been pretty challenging.
Yeah, committee, uh committee members versus the Jeff, Mike, I just wanted to know. Uh, I did mention to David and also to uh the G I general manager that perhaps we. C C S D charge to have those banners put up because it's maintenance for those banners, et cetera. And Michael, if you could do a little outreach to see if it's legal for the C C S D charge. I, and I'm sure somebody would from school would donate to have, you know, the banners up and so on and so forth, that the um. Tourism board might pay something to put things on there, so and also there's some infrastructure. That um the the general manager may want to make um a grant plea to the tourism board, I'm just throwing out ideas. But yeah, we need more money to support that, those um banners.
Can I come on that one?
Yeah, so with the banners for the high school, uh it has been free, or I know, which you know, which is great. Uh, sending the A frame ladder, like I said, up to that fourteen foot mark with these guys, uh I I don't feel comfortable with it and they don't feel comfortable. Uh, branding a boom is eight hundred and forty nine dollars, uh more or less for two days. That's just turn around and setting them up and if we don't run into any problems, uh the tourism board, uh they did reach out. Which was great, um that's something that we were talking about, looking at what we can do to turn around, incorporate a little bit of funds from that to help us out. Uh, for the maintenance on those uh light poles, because I noticed that some of the centers are out, somewhere wrong, like right now, hole one is on. There's several of them throughout town, the centers are backwards, I don't know. The full schematic, I actually reached out to them and got the wiring report, so but it's having that boom, um. If we know anybody or anybody close, I'm looking at Home Depot right now, seeing if they have any old ones, because being a mechanic, hydraulics. Barry and stuff like that, we can pick one up pretty cheap and then turn around and incorporate it uh with all of our departments on a trailer. Where we turn around and do it that way, um that that is a big thing, we've talked about revenue. From which would be a great thing, um especially for, you know, the F and R, for what we do out there with the the street bikes and stuff of that nature. Thanks, yeah.
So uh Jim, it suggested that uh we as a committee uh approach that, do you need that? Uh, the action from the committee or is that something that you've got uh?
That would be something, you know, with the GM, I would rather have you guys have, you know, you have that conversation with him. In regards to that, because it's just finding out, um. You know, financially, you know, calling around, I've called several different cities all the way in the other valley, um and stuff of that nature that I know that ramps them out. And usually on the average, it's about three to four hundred dollars or three hundred dollars a week. So it depends, I mean, if you want to run them, I mean, but like I said, that's a conversation with the GM. And seeing what we can do with our our fee schedules and stuff of that nature, you know, if that's something that we're legally able to do at this point. So I know dealing with the beautification and also our imprint, uh our carbon imprint. I know that's a big concern to uh the skyline and stuff that's been brought up to me in regards of that. Uh, beautification of Cambria, that's where that conversation's come up.
So what do you mean by that? You're gonna have to expand on that, are you talking about their problem with the banners?
Yeah, they brought that up, that it's impeding the skyline and the night and. But you know, that's, I know, that's why, you know, if if.
Kind of the only thing we do to highlight. But we could like as a group, you know, we could or even offline, we could go to Oddfellows or. There's a lot of organizations, Lions would be willing to help us support this.
So on the grant side of things, um our GM is very familiar with the structure of Cambria Tourism. And the grant requirements and how those applications are filled out, not when they're heard. So I, to Jim's point, I think it would be worth talking to our general manager and potentially submitting. A grant application that could help lean into some of these facility requests. My, I I apologize Steve, but I do want to make a comment on public record, um. We need to showcase our children and that is what, that was a banner program just started back, I was in the foundation of when it started. Um, four years ago, I think five at most, the amount of comments that we got from our community, just. So happy to see their graduates and our children, so. You know, every time I hear something said that is like, well, put it away, put it away, put it away, um I'm just going to be very loud on this. We'll find a solution, don't put it away.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'll send it back.
Great.
My overall comment was to just the state of those light poles from the very beginning has been weak at best. And I just feel like we're constantly band-aiding it and it's it's by no means your fault and then. I don't, I know when they designed it, I'm not sure the location of them were advantageous to not getting run over. So you put a new one up, it gets run over again next week and just like, how long are we going to keep putting one? In the spot by the bluebird that gets knocked over once a year or whatever. But nonetheless, I'm highly in uh support and I know there's other organizations. That would love to utilize it, but they think, oh, they're just gonna run and throw a pole ladder up there and it's not that, no one's gonna die doing that.
And see, and they're different sizes, that's that's a big thing, because I mean, we're the, you can't take same unless somebody with aluminum. They hear and then you snap one, and that's what I have, I have thirty six back pieces that have been replaced. With bolts happen and I'm like, okay, this is not working with the ocean, we gotta figure something else out. Yeah, so that's I I called a company and that's what we've been looking into. Um, but yeah, I mean, it's just turn around and making sure that it falls, uh we can do what we can with the light poles to get. Progression, you know, with more usage out of them, especially for high school kids, I mean, that's that's a big thing, so, yeah.
Oh, we appreciate it, through a report, very engaging, yeah, Jim, you're one one great comment, uh most uh nonprofits, tourism board especially. They don't like the word maintenance, so enhancement is.
Well, that's a huge T, but at some point, you know, if they don't want them so high, can we get things lower and is there a change?
And so like with the lower ones, that's the reason why we have replaced half of those poles or the the banner poles, some of them jumped up and snapped them off.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's.
So I have a little over eighteen and a twenty seven, I'm gonna let her miss.
Wow.
So that's where I'm just like, where do you draw the line?
Yeah, right.
And the top ones all the way underneath the line, so you know, that's fourteen feet with a five foot, so they're nine feet off the ground.
Yes, that's scary.
So.
There's a scissor ladder in the in the lands, the lions are using, utilizing it now, what's the timeline to create her? Getting those banners up.
Graduation's the first way to Jim.
Yeah, they said the fourth and fifth, and that's why we're trying, we're scrambling right now, uh because I turned to him, we would do it early morning. Uh, between two, three o'clock in the morning until seven, until we start with our normal, because due to the fact of the trap and everybody else that's stolen through town. Then we got to shut down the house in order to do it, uh with the, right, yeah, yeah, that's a concern that we have, even though we're checking lights and stuff. And so, yeah, thank you so much for it.
One of the undercurrents, what we're hearing is, uh, yeah, and David's not one uh one to brag, uh, you know, none of us are, but. The extent to which, um, David is looking for creative ways to have is now. Full crew of three do more of the work that was done by contract in prior years. So the volume of dollars going out on contract is shrinking dramatically. And uh it's really impressive to see, um so we're uh the work that, you know, he's doing to. Approach a balanced budget, um is uh is creative. And I just got to say, you know, I walked the ranch a week ago Sunday, you know, looking at the air area of thistle invasions. So on Wednesday, it 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 was just horrendous, so Wednesday we get out there with the the weeding crew and. On the south hill, pretty much every thistle. Had drooped and over, um dying, um you know, painted, you know, you could see, you know, uh. Every single one individually had been sprayed, I have no idea how Gregorio's uh crew is. That good at it, but inches away, another plant not touched, right, the natives weren't touched, um. And we were, it was just like a a cheer from the volunteers and so we spent two hours removing mustard instead of waiting through thistles. So, um, it 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 really is a a team, so thank you for that. Uh, other comments, questions?
I'm afraid to ask, but I got it, um, those benches that we have resource to, Cal Poly. Picnic benches.
I gotta reach out to them because I know the picnic benches, the ones that, the concrete ones. So I have them sitting on a trailer in my residence, uh my semi trailer, I have six of them sitting there, um. Cal Poly has turned around and asked if I would utilize them, so they're they're bitten, they got somebody else who's interested in it.
Yeah.
So, and that's one thing I'm working with them right now, so, um.
You're utilizing them on your resident.
Yeah, exactly, so that's that's something that I'm working with because it's just knowing where we'd be able to place them or. Just dropping them off out out there on their.
In the plant.
Yeah, so for clarification, Steve, you know, we've been wanting to get picnic benches out of the East Ranch, so at least we can show the public that something is getting done, right? So we're parallel pathing a bathroom that's coming, it's coming, so um this was an opportunity for the benches completely. Free and then Cal Poly, I don't know if they're going through some restructuring or the. They are, but they're in great shape and they're not cheap and so we've got six of them, so how do we get them placed?
Well, why can't we just store them right there next to the dog park?
You wanted to drop them on the ground?
Yeah, just put them right there, I mean, they can't be stolen, right?
No.
Let's just set them on the ground and they're just stored right there. I guess some seven year old could have a birthday party there, but other than that, you're not, you know.
South side.
Yeah.
I'm confused, wait, so we have picnic stuff that we're going to put out on the east ranch?
No, we're just gonna store it there until we get our bathroom, because we can't put them out until we get the bathroom.
That is not true. The general manager told me, the general manager told me that if you don't need a permit.
It can be done, the picnic benches are not a problem.
And it's movable, it's not, it's it's.
Permanent.
It's not screwed down and I'm or doing something and.
I don't like where they are, change them, but. Well, I was just trying to suffice Cal Poly and to get them out of the yard. And I'm sure it's gonna take us two or three months to decide on a very important location of the picnic tables. And the Feng Shui, thank you. Uh, but let's right, let's at least move them and if they're there, then we can all decide where they go after that, at least we'll be done.
Yeah, I'll have to uh work out uh the heiser, I figure more of those things up.
Yeah.
Our tractor won't be able to comment.
Let let's put something agenda for for next month and for now, uh you 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 David's heard the ideas. And uh, you know, resourceful and anything we can do now.
Okay, I'll reach out to Cal.
I love that you have them, David, thank you for getting them, because that is, they are expensive, they're about three or four grand a piece.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a sweet.
That's twenty five thousand dollars worth of pensions and, um, I mean, again. If we can just see something done out there and this is something that isn't permanent, that, um. Allows for a conversation with this bathroom, so I would love for you to talk to our general manager about, I heard the same thing Jim did. And that was that we didn't need permits.
Yeah.
Could be that the benches are placed and Steve's point, it could take us sixty to ninety days to figure out where they're placed, but it's not losing.
Yeah, okay, I'll talk to Lou and a couple guys that I know, I'll follow them. We get the full, we'll deal on it this week.
Okay, move on, hello.
Public comment.
Yes.
I think wanted to thank David very much, I can hear from his frustration. How hard he works and have, it's just amazing, there's very few people that work that hard. And I wanted to thank him very much for doing that.
Thank you. I owe it to the guys too.
Yeah, you can feel the sense of ownership.
Yeah, you can just feel it.
Steve, that a lot of comments?
His hand up now.
That is, that is, okay, uh Kitty.
All right, I just wanted to say that, um, that a couple picnic benches were put out on the east ranch. A couple of years ago and that was the number one. Suggestion when uh asked what you could do immediately on the east ranch a couple, couple of years ago now, maybe at least a year and a half. And as soon as the picnic benches were out, people started using them, so there's been no barrier to putting out picnic benches. For quite some time, except having the picnic benches. And so if David has picnic benches, I don't see any reason why you couldn't just put them right out right now.
I just didn't know about them.
I didn't have a go back.
Thank you, Kitty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kitty.
One question for David, um, well, actually, I just want, I wanted to make a comment and thank you in regards to the homeless situation. Um, because it is better than I've ever seen it. And um I also wanted to compliment the district in regards to their relationship with the historical society, because I think the. Agreement with the pocket park was one of the best things the district has done. Um, if you take a look at the pocket park right now, it's completely maintained and there's no trash and it feels safe. And I don't feel like I can't get my mail at nine o'clock at night, um so there's just a big thank you all the way around to facilities as well as. To the district on thinking out of the box and sometimes recognizing that there's things that we we can't keep hold of, like a pocket park. Give it to someone else and let them manage and maintain it and now the jail is there and that's kind of fun too, so.
Yeah, I got, you know, that's one thing I know I didn't talk about was the the homeless, um, the numbers, which we don't have. Uh, the only one we know is Jenny is under back underneath the highway one.
Yeah, it's the best I've ever seen it, David.
I have, I patrol, you know, quite a bit up around the ranch and stuff of that nature and then. I do go into some of the old uh areas where it's been habitated before and. You know, I haven't seen anything, uh we did find a gentleman in the shed. That was up behind the dog park up on the hillside, uh the old tool shed. Uh, I had a conversation with him about two weeks ago and he needed a ride, so after work I did give him a ride to Passau. To the motel section, so hey, I I'm willing to help out as much as I can and and I'll be honest with you, coming. In and out of forty six, which is kind of a blessing in my eyes, you do see people walking. And I have a tendency of turning around and conversating with them, you know, hey, what's your intentions, how far are you going? Um, because you know, like Cambria is, is, you know, here's my card, you'll see me. You know, uh and then if there's any other resources or anything else we can do for them to get them relocated. But especially with the the cap program and stuff of that nature, um that the county has set up and I work quite a bit with them and also with the. Uh, Art and uh everybody out with uh we call. Uh, cow grins, I could, we're always pretty consistent, we've talked about twice a week. So to cover everything that's going on with the travelers.
Awesome, David, thank you.
Okay, let's uh, uh, the actual report. Yes, let's move on to uh the consent agenda, um. So any revisions needed?
I moved that we grew the agenda of April sixteen.
Are there any revisions needed, anyone sees? All right, so we've got a motion, uh that we have a second, so uh so. The show ends, who's uh my favor, okay, that's all, it's unanimous and uh. The consent agenda is approved, I mean, the uh April twenty sixteen regular meeting minutes are approved. Uh, by unanimous, uh vote. Votes us to regular business, so six A is uh discuss and update the pros goals. Their goals, progress report, and I'll, I'll put that up on the screen. And while I'm doing that, Shannon, you may want to describe how you plan to update this.
Legible.
So our, our goals are listed on the spreadsheet that we post on our website. And we designed this, we previously came up with a workflow that people would send me emails during the month and then I would update our goals and then we would host a new one at the meeting. That's not working, so we're going to change it up a little bit and change the workflow. We'll present it at each meeting and each DRI can give me their update. And I can take notes and then go update the spreadsheet and we can PDF it and post it to the website by the next day. So that being said, the community park plan, I, we don't have an update there, although we do, we do have a meeting coming up, at which time I will update that. Jeff, do we have an update on the inventory of the CCSD lots?
Two things. One is, as we talked about, I will update you with tasks that I drafted up initially.
Okay.
So I will send that to you after this meeting. Second thing is, David, you and I need to, you need to take a look at those. And if we need to sort of pivot or whatever, based upon sort of your goal in this, that we do so and update those for Shannon. So we'll start with my initial draft. We can communicate about any changes, revisions I can make or get those revisions. Is this a shared document? Are we going to be able to go in on our own or?
This is not a shared document.
Okay, so then we can work together. And any changes need to be made. Shannon, I'll, I'll get to you.
I just need the copy and then I can put it in.
Is that cool? Does that work?
Yeah, what is, in regards to?
So I should have kind of prefaced this by saying, remind everybody that are, these are our goals for the year. And so the tasks that we have associated with each goal and, and whether or not we're meeting those tasks or, you know, updates to those tasks will be shared out with the public. So it keeps us moving forward and it communicates to the public what we're doing to move forward, to achieve our goals.
That's already all there. Roll over. There's kind of the meat, the tracking stuff.
Yeah, I did have some stuff. I thought, I'm sorry, I do have some things from you that I thought should be in this one. So I'll double check one I just sent out.
Okay. That's fine.
The agenda packet and maybe.
I think that one that I sent, yeah, I think you're right. But anyway, I have some, but you guys can still give me.
Okay, well, I guess I'll send that to us and then I'll review the thing, we're making changes, something back to Shannon. So that's. Does that make sense, David?
Yeah, yep, yeah. I could already have the whole list of everything.
Laura wants to comment on the open space topic.
Right, right, right. What I'm gonna ask is, okay, the CCSD marking their lots with these little sticks with the little reflectors on the top.
We just started that this year.
The problem with that is you need to really know which slots are what. Two lots that are adjacent to our house. And the sticks were marked on one lot where they were planning. You, you need to, you need to check where your property lines are.
Okay.
Because they divided our property with your sticks.
Okay.
So it wasn't correct. So you might just want to check some out.
That's gonna be the biggest thing because the guys that are out there, they use the three different maps.
Right.
So they showed a five foot difference. So I turn around and tell them to stick it down a little. Cause there's a five foot lead weight on every GPS thing that we have. The guy comes out and marks them themselves. The county does, we can't afford that.
This was a twenty five foot.
Yeah, that's.
What we did is, we picked up the two sticks and we had had that properly surveyed when we purchased it.
Okay.
And then we moved the sticks to line up with the circle lines.
Okay.
But I don't know if that's happening to other people because you're either gonna be cutting people's lots that you shouldn't be or you're not gonna be cutting, but you, I, I just saw it, bring it up.
Yeah, correct. No, that's, that's one thing that I'm gonna be doing after this season is going back and reassuring. Cause the guys are going out with their, their replacement book, the CCSD book. And then also with Fulcrum Diamond and also another Apex that we have that we're using for all of our boundaries. And that's where we're, we're trying to get all of our lots all situated. Cause we have ours under CCSD, it's just the boundary marks, they fluctuate so bad in every single map and even on our books.
I was just curious, he was putting out the sticks.
Yeah.
Now I know and it really needs to check because you're gonna be cutting.
Yeah. Okay, I will turn around and talk to them and I'll start surveying a lot of the ones that we've already done. And start moving forward. That's one of the newest things that we're adding into our lots. It's just so that way we know going and hit between the boundaries. They're a little more permanent.
Okay.
And just to expand on, on Laura's comment, or anyone who may be watching this video later, if somebody is aware that one of the lot markers, CCSD lot markers is off, they should go to the website and, you know, to the facilities and resources and there is a there is a hot link there where you can inform David Geary and he'll appreciate knowing that, right? Thank you.
Okay, so the next one is Steve with the Parks and Rec. Do you have any update there?
Not, no.
Nothing?
Quick question related to that meeting.
Meeting on Thursday, but I'm not gonna be there.
Okay, I'll be there. This Thursday, I can't do tomorrow.
That according to their normal website, I haven't seen a cancellation, but they did meet last month, is that correct? Which means it probably would mean this month. I, I think it got canceled by the end, right?
Okay, I think I canceled the month before. But, cause we were gonna.
Are we, are we, are you specifically selling them anything tomorrow night? I mean, do we want Jeff to take a message from us to say something to them?
No, but that's what I was gonna bring up with this particular line item is that it'd be nice to have some sort of update from the meeting, either
Okay.
Anything that you discover in the meeting that we could, you know, potentially use, work with them, that's interesting to us. And vice versa, anything that we want to communicate to them.
And not that I'm not intelligent, but the meetings that I've gone to, I haven't gleaned much stuff that we can get from them. I felt more like we need to tell them what we're doing. So that they can figure out ways that they might be able to help us. Cause it just, I feel like we're, they don't know anything about us. And we're, anything that you tell them about us, their eyes kind of open up and it feels like they're very encouraged by it. Like they love our pickleball because they're trying to build pickleball in Los Osos. And they look at our pickleball thing like, oh man, those people in Cambria, they got it together. They slapped down any pickleball thing. They don't know all the ins and outs of it, but they don't really know who and are what we are doing up here. So I feel like if Jeff goes down there and says, hey, we're on the skate park thing, we're here in the county, you guys have probably seen it, blah, blah. You know, and if, do we want to ask them about Shamal Park and they're putting in the new, you know, playground over there, just any of that, I just, it's.
So then Steve, can you provide, if, if, if you're not gonna go, at the very least, can you provide maybe some talking points for someone who could go?
Well.
I mean, you just give a good list.
Yeah, you know, and we could provide the, I would rather it be us than me specifically providing the idea.
Yeah. Maybe we can talk through, I mean, I'm willing to sort of co-own this with you, Steve, so, and I don't know if there's.
Just go tomorrow night and make a public comment, for sure. Make a public comment and let them know who you are.
Yeah, I'm just talking about ongoing since we're talking about this is a goal and, and, and I don't know if this is the right place for it. And I bet as we think about solidifying these goals in practice that, you know, maybe rather than getting everybody involved, you and I co-own this.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
We trade off in some way flexible, but roughly six times per year, six times per year, we each report back when we go. Next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, and to Steve's point, so let's share, what other talking points do we want to offer?
And you guys go with any of us, all of us, it's Thursday night. You're in San Luis, you can go at six o'clock and leave after the first half an hour just to be in it and you still get your Thursday night in San Luis. And them just seeing us, I swear, just seeing us is gonna create.
Well, I like the idea of us providing some information about what we're doing up here. I think that's great. The only thing that I want to see on this is because this is what we're showing to the public is some sort of, some sort of summary of the event each time we go. I think would be really helpful.
Yeah. Well, like so, to the point of this Thursday, so I'm like clear on what I may be sending to, to them. One is obviously just the beginning, still Steve has planted the seed, but continuing to establish relationships, here's who we are. Tell them who's on the committee, how we work and all that kind of stuff. But specifically, sort of my thought was the overriding thing is to start planning the county park, I mean, the community park. And here's what we're doing here. And is, so each of the goals, is that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Right, so here's what we're doing here.
The road into the county park and then help us with that.
Right.
Well, that's, yeah, the next thing.
Yeah, so. Okay. I think unless there's anything specifically.
I was just gonna suggest if they do minutes and we do minutes, maybe we should, on a regular basis, just give emails out, email addresses and swap minutes. So at least you can see if they had a meeting. And I wish I thought, well, not do that, I guess it's public.
Of course.
Yeah.
Did you tell the minute?
Alright.
Yeah. You know, that might, they're, they would not announce something to an individual. Like I couldn't get a notification, that wasn't in the system. But maybe our government could get it from their government, maybe that would be in the system. You know what I'm saying? Meaning I can't get an agenda emailed to me because I'm just a member of the public, but maybe.
You just go to the website. Yeah. There's Slough County.
Also, I guess I was just in reference to the cancellation of the meetings and the officialness of it as if we could, you know, at least without having to go to the website.
So in this particular line item, it's not so much about presenting tasks, but I would like some sort of summary
Yeah.
of the meeting or what we provided or what their input was to us, something.
Yeah.
Yeah. Make it so.
Yeah.
Just so I understand that the group, it, it's an advisory group that's put together by San Luis Obispo County?
It's the board supervisors group. Right?
It's like us.
Well, I think it's the. That like advises, the county board supervisors, I don't think.
No, but each board, each board member gets a representative on the board.
So it's an advisory?
It's an advisory board.
That has been put together by one from each district.
Yeah, everybody's got, there is a little overlap because of the last.
And so what is being discussed at their meetings is very similar, but much broader, bigger area. And so what you're hearing is all of their open space and recreational needs and ideas.
Oh, yeah.
And funding, that's where I was going. Okay, so.
That's why.
So the more they see us, the better.
Yeah. Thank you. That was the answer.
Right, yeah, and, and they're a commission advisory to the board.
Okay, so the next one, rodeo grounds road, I'm working that, that's also being worked by the CCSD. And I'm in comps to make sure that I don't step on any toes. But I am trying to get on the agenda for NCAC so that we can put it really kind of force the county at least to answer the question, when will we be paving rodeo ground roads? So I will update that.
So what, what I heard, I'm trying to remember the context, but general manager brought this up. Yeah. Immediately, as soon as the county received the resolution. Matt got a call. I think it was from supervisor Gibson, if not, it was from Blake Pixler. And, in fact, I think it was from Blake. And reminding that the county's obligation is to bring the road up to the standard the road was constructed at and to, to change the grade level. And, and David, you know what, what you call that grade of road, you know, there's, there's a road grades at college.
There's something I could call it.
No, I'm not really interested in what their grade is.
But, but to pave it with, basically, they would need the funding just like any other road. And they'd be happy to do, just like they will for any homeowner group is, you know, pave it and we pay them back over a ten year period. That was, that was the conversation that was had, so.
But we also included it on our list of asks.
Yeah.
Were we to get that, that money?
Yeah, and let's keep pushing that ass. That's, you know, that's what's happening.
So my, my, my point being that we are approaching this from a lot of different angles.
Yeah. And the more the better.
Yeah, yeah. So again, I just want to reiterate that I'm hoping to add the skate park on here with Julie as the DRI. And we have, we, I am thinking that we need to remove the safe pedestrian walkways off our matrix.
Right, all four of them, I agree.
The connection from the east and west ranch, I'd like to keep on. So we have the pedestrian walkways.
And the verted drive walkway.
And the verted driveway, sorry, yes. Both those proposed that we remove those and mostly not remove them forever, table them from now, focus our efforts a little bit better. Yes, those are giant projects with absolutely no need to be done, but we have some ideas for some other organizations to approach and some ways to, to kind of work that. And right now I think it's kind of spreading us too thin. So.
And direction from the CCSD board was essentially what Shannon is saying is that those are not goals that the board wants this committee to be.
Even though they are open space, which I do think they are, but.
Right, and it's within the district and, and it's, and it's a need.
Yeah.
But focus on the other things, what we heard.
It's more like not the leading table. So we're just taking them off for now. The trail connecting east and west ranch, I think is super high priority. I'd like to leave it on, I'll take the DRI on that one. But as far as priorities go, it might like sink to the bottom for now. But I definitely want to leave it on because I think it's so important, especially after the accident just happened on that day. And how many times I have tried to get across the highway from the east and west ranch, it's insane. And then also I go a lot of times under the bridge and go that way, which I don't, all battle the boys know if that's not the issue. It is a little scary when you encounter a homeless person with a machete. So I do believe that that one is kind of critical.
I've been going through the ranch management plan in a fair bit of detail the last few days and I can't count the number of, in, in every, almost every chapter that connecting trail is mentioned, that the then current ranch management plan over twenty years ago, it was clear that that was an upcoming project that was going to be addressed.
Under the bridge.
There were, there were alternatives, under the bridge, a light.
Yeah, the bridge over.
Over and over, one of the three, but do one of those three. And that was in the ranch management plan. It's still in the ranch management plan. And so that's.
Well, and also there is some big legislation coming out of state on, I don't know how they phrase it, but the, the animal corridors. And so there's gonna be some big money there and this is an animal corridor. And it'd be nice to make it safer for deer and everything else to cross the highway. So.
We can't get the humans to.
We can't get the humans across, but maybe we get the deer.
Squirrels.
This is another reason why I just want to leave it on our goals, just so this is kind of in our, you know, in our, you know, we're paying attention to it, that's all. So is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you need to vote on that?
Uh, you know, what we'll do, we'll take a vote and I'll, and I'll, I'll read the summary of changes. Yeah, yeah, good point.
I know it says discuss, but could we at least acknowledge that we're gonna try and put picnic benches over there? And as per the general manager's direction or something?
Well, that is, we have community park planned and that is something that's gonna happen, but in, you know, the context of that plan and so the ad hoc committee will be meeting next week. And let's sort that out and bring that back to the next meeting.
So we gotta wait until next meeting for him to take him from his property?
No, we can talk about it, but just give us time to like look at the map and think about what we want to do.
Yeah. Great, Jim, as you've said in the past, you know, uh Mr. Gary doesn't report to this uh to this committee. He reports to Mr. Peckelhany and.
Yeah.
And and you know, you know.
So I agree.
That that savvy and 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 he knows, I think, where to put those those benches and and he knows that we we want them.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, so does everybody understand the spirit of our goals?
Yes.
And what we're trying to do here as far as being transparent on what we're getting done towards those goals? Yes, okay, so and everybody understands the workflow that if you don't get it to me during the month, at this meeting, you can tell me what your updated task item are or your summary or report or whatever. And I will update it and that will happen on the website the next day or two. Okay.
So I guess the motion would be to to uh to approve the uh the goals. As revised with the removal of the Burton Drive Walkway and the safe pedestrian walkways.
I'll make that motion.
You got, yeah, okay.
Second, yeah, if if.
So, yeah. And Julie seconded.
Okay, Julie seconded, okay.
For notes.
Hi.
And that's five, uh so unanimous.
Okay.
Thank you, and uh Julie, thanks for the leadership on 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 this, this great.
Um the only other question I have is how do we go about adding the skate park? So is that a conversation Julie has? Are you on that ad hoc committee or?
Well, we don't, yeah, I mean, we just crafted an ad hoc committee.
No, we don't need an ad hoc.
So here's the, here's, here's.
Oh, I see.
Uh correctly, the board.
Yeah, we got rid of that.
Is.
It's it's been disbanded?
No, uh what, yeah, Karen Dean with uh some emphasis uh at the strategic planning workshop. In, I believe it was March, uh stated that the um. The skate park. Of the, the ad hoc committee of the board.
Which is Karen.
Karen and Harry. Um were formed to drive progress on the skate park. Is uh, you know. Has the need for that up to the point where the construction permit is issued. I think that was how they put it. Um and what Shannon is saying is that um based on her sense of the progress, it's time for, oh, and also. Karen Dean, Director Dean stated that um at that point in time. Uh the, you know, following up on the skate park would be assigned to the pros committee. Um delegated to the pros committee.
And one of the reasons that I would really love to get it back with us is because as a goal. Then we're being very transparent about what we're doing moving forward, and so we update this every month and let the public know where we are in the whole process. Which I'm not saying isn't being done by now, but it's it's being reported out by pros, how where it is. So I think it's appropriate.
Right, and also maintenance is gonna be an issue that we need to, we were directed to address, right?
Yes, absolutely.
So having it as a goal is a great idea.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so that's uh step one, I need to, you know, you know, we'll get our minutes, you know, we'll get our, you know. Story together on that and then I will communicate that to the uh. You know, the board president and the general manager that, you know, in the close committee, it's time to make that transition. And then that conversation happens and I'm uh just one voice out of five in that uh in that board. But I um so let's see, I agree. Uh but no, no reservations. Awesome, um so that brings us to um. Six B, discuss and consider ad hoc committee assignments, uh just thought we should at least put this um. Up for for discussion uh with uh a member on the committee, at least, let's see what these assignments are. And um you know, look ahead, I have no info for specific changes of any sort, just thought it would be a good idea to to have a look and have a chat about that.
Well, am I understanding um that we're gonna add skate park as its own category?
If we're allowed to, yeah.
Yes.
On our goals.
Yes, yeah, okay. Well, I'd certainly like to go there. And so if the question then becomes, Michael, where else, Julie, would you like to go?
Right.
Um I actually have interest in. I know you guys were talking six months and six months, but I've got interest in the relationship with San Luis Obispo County. So I like to work with Steve and Jeff, if you'll have me.
I'll sell you three of my six.
You will?
Yes.
You'll make me a good deal?
Way better than Jeff.
About two.
I bet you will.
No, I would, I would.
Yeah, well, I, I, you know, just all of us going and even if two of us are there, I just.
It can't hurt.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
So can you add me there, Shannon? Is that okay?
Is that, is that an ad hoc?
So we can uh, three of us could be on an ad hoc committee, yes.
But that is not an ad hoc, that's not an ad hoc.
Oh, really, not an ad hoc?
Oh.
We're talking goals or ad hocs. So that is one of our goals, you can absolutely anticipate any of our goals.
Yeah.
One hundred percent.
Oh, I know.
But the only ad hoc committee that is stated is the signage, East Ranch and. And the um of the state management.
Oh, I'm not seeing that, I apologize, I'm looking at this.
Yeah, and you know what, at at any time, fair question. Well, this committee, uh additionally on a ad hoc committee, uh we can do that at any time. Uh there isn't. You know, right, so if we wanted to, you know, if there was benefit, uh Steve, from your perspective, that uh. This county influence um. You know.
No, we don't need an ad hoc for that.
Yeah.
No, I'm straight up on reporting, yeah, but I'm on signage for sure.
Well, yeah, now we're moving to a community ever for signage, which is good because we need to get back that.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's exciting, because there needs to be consistency with signage.
Been busy. And we've kind of talked about all three of these, I just. Wanted to.
Remind us all that we're doing these things?
Right, yeah. Put this in the forefront. Um I had no particular agenda other than just make this as a goal. Other thoughts?
Other thought would be, I'd love to see percentages in the column. As in ten percent, twenty percent.
Oh, a percent?
Completed tasks.
Yeah, the that is not the current one.
No, I know.
Yeah.
But I'm saying it'll be a good day when we.
When we start seeing that, I agree with that.
Percentages. I think it'd be really important to work towards. Moving the numbers.
This is a question relating to the, you know, going to the county meeting down there. When you go to the meeting, excuse me, you come across a guy named Bob Hill. He's he's like chairperson of the environmental down there.
Oh.
Do you come across his name, Bob Hill?
I haven't been to one yet.
I'm familiar with that name, but I don't think I've seen his presence at the meeting.
Okay, the reason I mention that is because he used to be the executive director when Fern Canyon Resort started. He was the executive director for a number of years and then he took the county and is a head official in their environmental down there. Just just so that you know how it all connects.
Bob Hill? Other, any other thoughts on this? Before we move to future agenda items, then. What happens? Other, uh so, yes, you know, any future agenda items that um that you have the insights on.
Don't have, wouldn't be crazy to uh. Put a disco one. One basket out there, just one. Portable.
So we, um there are some kids have already been doing that and then taking them home, I didn't know that.
Cool, I didn't know that.
Um we did propose in the plan to do one. One basket, that's just a practice basket, and that would be a super, super easy thing to implement. Um be really nice to do that, but again, you have to dig a hole. The bathroom to get placed for us to be able to dig a hole.
You have a big white round circle thing and have it stand on.
Well, like I said, I've seen a couple of kids show up with baskets and think they're out there, so. Kids aren't doing that, they've gotten the idea because we presented the whole disco thing, you can come out there and play disco.
Cool.
So, which is a great thing. When I, when I saw them doing that, I was jumping up and down, please come and do this again.
In a hole.
We don't clean the hole.
Could you drive a stake in, is that wrong too, or is that, now that we're getting down there?
My new shop.
Well, pretty good, but he can go out on the ranch and recreate anywhere they want.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Something, if they bring something to the ranch, can't we? Provide one and.
Well, well, Jim, the the question is, what topics would you like to put on a future agenda for this for this committee?
Can I discuss?
The future of.
The future of.
So what can we put out?
Yeah.
What can we put out?
Yeah.
That and again.
No, I'm uh I was going on about the bathroom, why is it taking an extra couple of months? I know that's not a future agenda, I don't want to pretend like it is. But did we, did we answer that somewhere in this meeting? I was gonna be six months and then I've read now it's another eight months, is that true?
Well, we saw two hundred and forty days. Right, two hundred and forty days, you know, uh you know, two forty divided by thirty is more than six months, right? Yeah, so that's more like eight months, and that's what we were told. And then we, in one of the GM's letters, we heard that there was a greater backlog than he had previously been informed.
Yeah.
Now, the order was placed April first, and that's not an April fool's joke. It was, you know, the order was placed on uh April one.
And so we thought it would be six months from them and they're saying that's really gonna be more.
We had thought it was, you know, along, uh the gym had been saying two hundred and forty days.
Yeah.
They've been saying that for months.
Yes. And is the company now telling us it's longer?
That's what I heard.
I want to agendize a update about them monthly, right, so put that on our future.
Yeah.
And as a future agenda item, maybe we say, what can we do in the next two hundred and forty days?
Yeah. Yeah.
There you go.
Good.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, to Shannon's point, everything hinges on this infrastructure, and so.
We know nothing about it.
Right, we we need to know monthly exactly where this T O is and where it sits and.
And what they're doing, yeah.
I mean, I.
How are they paying for that walkway from the parking lot to the bathroom? I really want to know that.
How we're paying for it?
Yeah, how are you doing?
I don't think, funds have been budgeted for the east ranch restroom. And. Um cement board is part of the scope of the project.
Yeah, but I don't know that because nothing has ever been presented to us.
Okay. So we'll get the uh a group, you know. Update, update in June and each month uh until it's, lights are on, water is water.
Well, and to Jim's point, I think this is really great because there are things that can be done, like horseshoe pits. There's no digging, I mean, there's can be a small grading, I mean, I'm just saying, there there are things that. We can do.
Made it way.
Yeah, well, cornhole boxes, I mean.
They're portable.
They're portable.
I was saying, I don't know, you know.
I mean, summer is here, I I it's it's such a beautiful piece of.
Yeah, come out, brave the gopher holes.
Yeah, and.
Wade through the weeds and the thistle and throw some cornhole. That'll be. And it'll be a community park.
Maybe gopher holes is something we can do with the next two hundred and forty minutes.
Yeah, I, the update on the bathroom, but what can be done in the meantime, what is allowable, I mean.
Fair enough, and that's been a topic of discussion uh for several meetings, so let's let's agendize that. Um but what, obviously, um updates on the restroom and what can be done prior to the lights going on. Uh in other words, what can be done without any permit?
Yeah, I I think the other conversation that this um really. Leans into is the more you get out there, the more the county is gonna be inclined to help us with paving that road. I mean, it's gonna be public pressure, it's gonna be knocking on the door down there, Shannon, and saying, wait a minute. You know, you told us to do this because we had to have it in order to do that. And now we've got the entry to this that is.
To our bathroom that you can't, right, impossible, it's broke to the bathroom.
I mean, the idea is to have a community park, that was the idea from the very beginning.
County parks put pressure on public works, does that help writing?
Sure.
Sure, why not?
Yeah, it saves them money. Hey, can you help us, say, we could get our little road to a park?
How many road, how many parks wants?
I mean, it's, I I get it, it's an expensive undertaking. I think the quote was, I mean, they were throwing out numbers to just shy of a million dollars, some crazy number like that.
I mean, I don't know how many, you know, how many baskets it takes to to win the game, but, you know, yeah, scoring from every direction, in other words, yeah. All the help we can get.
Yep.
Uh so we have uh two future agenda items. Uh if I'm not mistaken, that that brings us to the point of adjourned the meeting and it is three forty six P M, excellent wall. Um a lot of energy, a lot of uh uh, you know, very productive and uh Shannon, thanks for the cookies.
Yes.
All right.
I need to stop, share.
Stop video.